Public officers, thank you for attending this meeting of the charity subcommittee and welcome. So to the public today, there are some appendix to the report on items 11 and 12, which are not available to public or press because they contain exempt information relating to financial and business affairs. If members wish to discuss the information in the appendices, we will need to ask the members of the public to leave the meeting whilst we discuss it. We've received one set of public questions and no petitions. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched off or put to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there's an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is in Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, can I ask each charity's subcommittee member in turn to introduce themselves and I'll start with councillor Nas.
Good afternoon, my name is here Nas, I am the councillor for the Darnall Ward and deputy chair for the charity subcommittee.
Fran Belbin councillor for Firth Park Wards.
Douglas Johnson councillor for City Ward.
Richard Williams councillor for Stanleyton Ward.
And I'll ask officers to introduce themselves as they speak to an item on the agenda. I've not received, well, we're all here, have not received any apologies for absence, which I have a go. Excluding a present public, I've explained that in relation to items 11 and 12, one of which will be tram lines and the other one is about Weston Park and a festival event planned. Can I ask any members if they've got any declarations of interest? Okay, that is... None. Minutes of the previous meeting have been circulated. I'm going to assume members have had a chance to read them and that they could well be happy to approve them. Yes? And are there any other matters arising that members wish to raise, not covered in the report? Thank you. So that gets us to item five, public questions and petitions. I've received questions from Friends of Graves Park. I wonder if we might take them. Caroline, are you here to ask those? If you want to put your questions, if you will deal with questions one to five, please. And ask them as a set? Yeah? Thank you. Yes, because I'll give you a response to one to five.
Okay, so as you know, my name's Caroline Dewar and I'm chair of Friends of Graves Park and I'm asking these questions on behalf of the Friends of Graves Park regarding the restoration of the next section of the nurseries back to parkland. Will the charity subcommittee please acknowledge that the response to the Friends' questions, which we asked at the last charity subcommittee, did not answer any of our questions? Will the charity subcommittee please acknowledge that the statement that the elements of the Norton Nursery site have been used for the maintenance of Graves Park and other parks in the local area prior to the amalgamation of the nursery site into the 2009 Graves Park scheme cannot be correct if SCC was claiming in 2008 that the site was derelict and surplus to requirements? And that this response to our questions is misleading, particularly for anyone not fully familiar with the history of the site? Will the charity subcommittee please note that, as with the previous two restorations of parts of the site to parkland, the new restoration will be fenced off with a supervised access to volunteers until the site is fully restored and safely opened to the public? So the response given to our questions, which states, 'We are aware of the excellent work the Friends of Graves Park have put into the Chantryland Meadow and the Arboretum and are motivated to see further parts of the site restored to similar standards. However, we are currently not in a position to allow any volunteer group's access to the site to conduct work due to health and safety concerns, due to moving vehicles, COSHH and PPE required. It would not be safe for members of the public to have access to this site. Furthermore, there are a lot of vehicles, equipment and other expensive items that need to remain in a safe and locked area that is currently provided by the site. Will the charity committee, subcommittee, acknowledge that this response is misleading, particularly for anyone not fully familiar with the site? Will the charity subcommittee please note that in the above response from SCC to our questions, in the reference to the moving vehicles and expensive equipment, the Norton Nursery site is not and never has been a depot, according to Sheffield City Council. So it is not surprising that there are regular break-ins where fuel, vehicles and/or parts are stolen and that a proper, secure depot would be a much better place to store council equipment that is not relevant to Graves Park. Will the charity subcommittee please, as a matter of urgency, agree to the land for the next section of Chantryland Meadow and Arboretum as identified in the questions of the 22nd of January 2024, being released to the Friends of Graves Park for restoration with immediate effect so that it can be fenced off while it is restored back to parkland and then once restoration is complete, reopened to public use?
Thank you Caroline for your questions. There is an item on the agenda under charity correspondence which may well be of interest. There's also an item about glasshouses, about the glasshouses and that might be relevant to your question five about how access might be managed. But in broad terms, members of the committee, and if we can arrange it, it will be every member of the committee is going to visit the Norton Nursery site. It's either a week today or two weeks today, anyway, two weeks today. And members sincerely hope that you will have a fair crack of explaining to members what the issue is and what the concerns are. So in the light of that, I would prefer, propose to give you a written answer to your questions, once we've had a chance to, well, actually be there and hear about it. Actually, no, we all live, you and I live very local and not everybody is familiar with the issue. So I hope you'll accept that as an answer for now and anything that's not cleared up can then be covered in a written response. So if you'd like to answer your questions about the glasshouses, if it helps though in terms of, because you may want to get them on the record, but in a sense, it's an item on the agenda today and we haven't made as such any decision about it. It's like a pending decision, so it might well again be considered in the report. So over to you.
Regarding the proposal to use the glasshouses for growing food, that's the glasshouses on the Norton Nursery site. While the Friends are broadly in favour of the glasshouses being used for food growing by members of the public, why was a formal consultation not conducted regarding this issue? Is the use of the greenhouses in this way really in the best interests of the Graves Park charity? Is this getting best value for the charity? Has Sheffield City Council checked that it is allowed to lease the greenhouses in this way and that they do not have to put it out to tender? Are the members of the charity subcommittee aware that the glasshouses have not been maintained? And that therefore the estimate of £10,000 to restore the glasshouses is a woeful underestimate? Has a proper survey of the glasshouses been done? And have the results been shared with the charity subcommittee? Can the charity subcommittee guarantee that any plans to bring the greenhouses back into use will not adversely affect the Friends of Graves Park's longstanding request to restore the next section of the Norton Nursery site back to parkland? Further to the above, does the proposed use of the greenhouses mean that the site will no longer be used as a general parks and open spaces depot and dumping ground? Does this also mean that the objections of Sheffield City Council to the restoration of the next section of the nurseries back to parkland by Friends of Graves Park at their own expense, because it would entail access by members of the public, will now be removed as the above use of the greenhouses by members of the public is being approved?
Well, again, thank you so much for your questions, very relevant questions. We are going to do this visit, we can also take, hear about the glasshouses at the same time. But Ruth might well consider some of the questions about access and the state of them when it comes to the report, which I see is just after the update on Rose Garden Cafe. So if you're able to stay for that, that could be helpful. Anything that's not covered, we can cover in a written response, which I hope will prove to be at least satisfactory, at least a response, let's say. We'll do it that way, I hope that that's acceptable. Thank you. Item number six, well, I pressed the button to switch the volume off and anyway, never mind. Item six, members' questions, I've not received any members' questions, so we go on. Work programme, item seven, is going to be introduced by Amanda, thank you very much Amanda.
Thank you Chair. Only to note that since the publication of this agenda, we have now determined the date of an extraordinary meeting of this committee, which will take place on Thursday the 21st of March and the agenda for that will be published on our website on the 13th. And the next year, next municipal year calendar, the dates are yet to be confirmed. Thank you.
Amanda, is this to cover the camp parking charges, the extraordinary meeting?
Yes, in addition to the report that we already have, that we... We're hoping to give a further update on the Rose Garden Cafe at that meeting as well.
Oh, nice. Thank you. Have members got any questions on the work programme? Can I take it that the members approve of the work programme? So then we move on to item eight, which is Charity Commission correspondence, which is Ruth.
Thank you Chair. I'm not proposing to go through the report line by line, because I appreciate that you will have all read it, but just to let the committee know, as you're aware, the council is often in dialogue with the charity commission regarding the various sites we've got across the city that are charitable. The charity commission most recently wrote to the council on the 24th of November. The letter that they wrote is contained at appendix one of the report and in the final paragraph of the letter, it asks that the trustees, the trustee reads and discusses the letter collectively and then responds. So the paper talks you through that letter, the topics of the letter, which include the Rose Garden Cafe, the Friends of Graves Park, council governance, the action plan, Norton Nurseries and finally the proposed disposal of the tennis courts. It sets out what is said in the letter, what the proposed response from the trustee is, as per how it's been prepared. The complete proposed response to the charity commission is contained at appendix two and the report asks the committee to approve the contents of the proposed response to the charity commission and then also that, subject to that approval, the officers should forward that correspondence to the charity commission by way of an emailed letter within three working days of the decision. But I appreciate that you might have questions and/or changes, proposed changes that you want to make to the letter.
Have members got any questions? Then if I may, from what I picked up, on page 45 of the papers, last paragraph, disposal of the tennis courts and about income generated. Apologies to members, it might be me, but I was having this discussion with Sarah and it amounts to saying that the income generated will go to Hillsborough Park Community Interest Company, the operator of the tennis facility. And it's a community interest, but in the end, the income belongs to them. If there is surplus income generated within Graves Park, it will go into the Graves Park charity account. But it's not, it's not directly generated, I just thought we should make that clear. The, in paragraph four above about oversight, failure to regularise the use of the depot at the time of transfer in 2009 was an oversight. And, you know, I was there at the time. I don't think it was an oversight in the sense that the councillor's trustee wished to reserve that land unto itself as corporate land. There's not a dispute that this is designated charitable land to be used for the purposes of the charity and in part, I don't think it is beyond dispute, but it's not being used exactly for the purposes of the charity. And that in order to regularise that, if you wish to regularise that, that's not a decision for today, it's a matter to go to the commission for an order to allow this to happen. And the council is not seeking, as trustee, to use the trustee of land act or any tenancy act will and stuff. It recognises that there is potentially a conflict of interest to be managed and that this will require an appropriate legal order by the commission and it'll go fully through the process of obtaining such an order. Am I right so far, Sarah?
Yes, sure.
Right. And there was another thing, which, like I said, for fans of Just Minister, it was what? Was it the keeping, oh yeah, members are going to visit. I thought it was useful to say to the commission that we are going to go and take a look ourselves. And I think that was every little, yep, that was it. So subject to those, our members are happy with some sort of, oh, Douglas.
Yeah, sorry, I'm still happy. I'm just going to raise one about the interest, because one of the questions on the charity commission on page 41 is about the Norton Nursery and it asks, please confirm how conflicts of interest were managed when decisions were made? And these were some time ago. I was just a little concerned that the response we've brought forward, as it says, we're not aware of any conflicts of interest. And of course, there's always inherently going to be some conflict there. And I just wondered if it'd be helpful to get the message across to the charity commission that we say that whatever happened back when, back in the day, back in 2009, we've now moved on in the sense that we now have a committee system, so we have a different committee, i.e. this one, that is set up to be separate from Save the Parks Committee or other committees and partly to address that conflict of interest. It might be something that is of assistance to try and, you know, show that we are addressing the issue of conflicts of interest, which the charity commission will always take very seriously. So I just wondered if that can be taken back through officers looking, thinking at Ruth and at Sarah.
I mean, inheriting the deal, in my opinion, was a conflict of interest. But it wasn't in conflict as far as a lot of the land was concerned back then, because there wasn't a plan to restore it. But I think we would agree that councillor Johnson is right to say, actually, it would have been better to have got that sorted, at least by acknowledging it way back when. It's hindsight, I guess.
I think my point is that we can add something in now that says, you know, gives a bit more reassurance that we have conflicts of interest managed better now because we have separate committees to deal with separate functions.
So the note, in terms of the amendments, so the original recommendation was that you approve the letter as attached. What I think is being proposed, well, we've got two separate proposals, I guess, but proposed amendments from the chair, they were on, I think the both or three on page 45. So at point four of the response in relation to Norton Nurseries, Chair, you specifically wanted to add, after the trustee recognised the position needs to be regularised, the wording along the lines of including any necessary consents or orders from the charity commission, which is a reference back to something that's elsewhere in the letter. Yeah. No, okay. And in relation to, and you also wanted to add, and actually I think it probably sits better in the bit further up, an acknowledgement of the fact that the charity trustee subcommittee are looking to go out to the site as part of the steps to secure the future of that area of the park. And then, and also in that area, councillor Johnson is proposing in addition to reflect the fact that we now have a committee system with a specific committee dealing with the charitable aspects to assist with the clarity around decision making. And finally, at point, at answer five, under the heading disposal of tennis courts, Chair, you'd asked for clarification that that's income generated under the arrangement with Hillsborough, the CIC. I won't, I could probably get the name wrong. That that will be applied to the charity so that there's no potential for confusion that we're talking about the actual monies that people pay directly, which obviously doesn't come directly to us. So that's the proposal, just for the formality of it, can we have a second, Chair?
I sort of like Douglas with respect, I suggested there might be some amendments and I spoke to my friend over there and saw if he would, Richard's willing to second it, including your proposal. So I think, are we all in agreement? I'll take that as we're in agreement. I've just got one other point to make after we've agreed this and it's just this, which is vexing. The only issue of the improvement plan, which was a legal direction by our regulator, which was included eventually to us as members in a whole string of emails, which we had to unpick. And I just think that was a bit off really, that we should have seen that a wee bit earlier than when we did because it was actually issued in May. And I know that was the council AGM and we were getting set up, but I think we've been a little bit behind in seeing that. But I'm glad to know that we're back on track. So that brings us on to item nine, update on Rose Garden Cafe. Becky and Caroline. Oh, right, over to you Becky, or Caroline, or both, as you wish.
Yeah, ready to go. Okay, so thank you very much. So yeah, I'm Rebecca Nixon, project manager in Capital Delivery Service.
I'm Caroline Dewar, Friends of Graves Park, as previously announced, but also representing the Friends of Graves Park's position in the partnership.
Okay, great. And yeah, so we're here today to provide an update on the progress in the Rose Garden Cafe partnership, which has three partners, so Sheffield City Council, of which I'm a representative, Friends of Graves Park, which of course Caroline is a representative, and we also have Save the Rose Garden Cafe campaign as well, so those are the three partners. I'm going to keep it a little bit briefer today. Obviously, we updated you on the 22nd of January, I think it was, was the previous progress update. And today, as per your feedback last time, Caroline is here to give another partner representative, so it's not just Sheffield City Council perspective. But as per the previous report, the contents of this officer report was shared briefly in terms of what was going into the report with the other partners and an opportunity to just reflect and ensure that it was capturing the progress that we'd made as a collective. So we're just going to go through the key items that you guys approved back in October 18th. So we'll look at the establishing of the partnership and an update on that, the public consultation, the funding strategy, which Caroline's going to talk through, because she's been leading on that. And then also just an update on the structural engineer appointment, which is a key item that was brought forward by the partners. So starting with the establishing of the partnership, we are really happy that we've now got Chris Hallam, our new chair on board. So yeah, that's all good and he attended his first meeting, which was our last meeting, which was last Friday. I think it was a chance for us as a partnership to kind of reflect on the progress that we'd made since we started forming. So it was really helpful to have him on board and he's starting to ask those questions that perhaps more difficult, but will allow us to be more resilient as a partnership, which is what we really need. And his kind of first task that he's taking us through is to develop the terms of reference, which we have as a draft and we have the memorandum of understanding to kind of build off. So he's helping us work through that. That will be a key agenda item for our next meeting, which is on Friday the 16th of March. So we're still having fortnightly meetings to progress. Other than that, in terms of establishing the partnership, I guess we're nearly there. We are doing some work and we have done some work around the role of the partnership and the decision-making process and that will be included within the terms of reference. So moving on to the public consultation, we've made some really good progress on this since we last updated you. So in the appendix, you'll see a kind of draft engagement strategy, which we've developed further since then. But this really looks at why, why are we engaging, kind of beyond the proportionate consultation and beyond our duties as a council to engage. It's thinking about who, what we want to engage on, when we're doing it. And I think the kind of overriding reason for why and what is we want to really ask the public about what the function of that building can be, how it can be a community asset moving forward and thinking about all the design elements that the design team will work through, which includes preserving the building's heritage and history, but also improving energy efficiency, thinking about the function and also the appearance of the building. So we've now nearly agreed the survey and it's actually been a real process of co-creation within the partnership to bring forward methods of how we're going to consult. So we've got an online survey, which will also be a paper copy and we need to ensure that we distribute that both within the Graves Park Ward but also within the city and we all reckon... we all recognise that this is a city park, it's a city destination, and people go to the park from, yeah, across the city. One of the members of Friends of Graves Park has taken the lead on working with Newfield School and the cartoon club there, and the idea with that part of the consultation is that it's engagement that's designed by young people for young people. So I think, well, I'm really excited about it, and I think the rest of the partnership is, so that will be a presence within the cafe, and there'll be boards that are designed by young people asking questions surrounding the consultation, so that's ongoing as well. And then at the last meeting on Friday, we talked about an event in the park, which both the other partners, probably not Sheffield City Council, because it would be drawing perp, but they'll be leading on, so that's about launching the consultation and engaging with people actually in the park. So we are launching the consultation in terms of the online survey on Friday the fifteenth of March, and the boards created by the young people will be in the cafe from the fourteenth of March. The idea is that that consultation will run for five weeks, and we, the results will help shape the brief of the restoration and the refurbishment, once the design team are appointed, so that's where we're going with that. I think also, really importantly, we recognise as a partnership that we want to be able to update the public as a collective a little bit better, and we're hoping that through having a have your say page dedicated to the Rose Garden Cafe, we'll be able to do that a bit more promptly and give that confidence to the public, so that's the aim there. And then the final item from me is the structural engineer appointment. So I think I described last time that one of the key items brought forward by the partners was that we really want to progress what the structural solution for that front wall will be. We therefore came back, the SEC representatives did some work and came back to the partnership and said, these are the different ways that we can procure that structural engineer. Since then, we have agreed a route, and we co-created a scope of works for the structural engineer to do. We have said that we need to have two quotes via the delivery partner, so we've had one quote received at the end of last week, and we're just awaiting the next quote, which will be, we've been promised by this week, and then we'll look to appoint that structural engineer and that work will start immediately. And as a partnership, we discussed on Friday, what are the next steps once that structural engineer has done that piece of work? So we're working through those elements as well, so that we don't then get a kind of pause within that workflow. So those two pieces of work, the structural engineer's report and then the public consultation, will feed into allowing us to have a proposal and a agreed, well, a cost plan, a feasibility cost plan, and that will then enable us to then go out for external funds and start really applying for those, those grants, so that's the kind of process that we're going through. And Caroline, I'm going to hand over to you to give an update on funding.
Thank you. Yes, so one of the things that I've been looking at is, is about the potential funding for the restoration of the cafe building in Graves Park. It's, we've, I've done a potential, I've done a search and I've put many various places we could get funding from together. You have to appreciate that when, when doing this sort of work, these things change all the time, so places that were possible places we could have applied for funding last year are not there anymore, other places that were not there last year are now there, so it's like an ongoing thing, and it's very frustrating making a list of potential funders and you can't apply, because we can't apply until we've got a business plan, an action plan, we can't apply until we know how much money we're applying for. And basically, in terms of funding, we've been in limbo for, it'll be two years, coming up to two years, before we get a chance to do this, so that is frustrating. However, we have, I have got a table that I've put together, I've checked what the criteria are for applying to various places, I've checked whether this project meets those criteria, so anything that doesn't, we've weeded out. There are places we can apply for small amounts, places we can apply for large amounts, places for different aspects of it, places for match funding. So that's all been done, and what I'm in the process of doing at the moment is, is tightening that up, but then adding any others and taking any off that jump overboard, basically. So that's where we are at the moment, but obviously there's only so much that I can do, because until we have definite estimates of what we're going to do, and as you can appreciate, we cannot have those estimates until the structural engineer has looked at that front wall plate, and until we have a solution for that, and until our architect has been allowed to do some proper drawings and, and say what the solutions are with the engineer, once that's done, then everything else can be put into place and we can have some proper estimates and we can start applying for funding, which the Friends of Graves Park is willing and prepared to do. We also have, as you know, a JustGiving account that Friends of Graves Park have set up, and so far we have nearly ten thousand pounds in there, that doesn't include the gift aid. There are a lot of people, there are a lot of people who keep coming to me and saying, I'm not putting my money into that until I see that it's definitely going ahead. So we know that there are a lot of individuals who are prepared to put in their money, so ten thousand is the minimum we're going to have, that we will get more donations from individuals as well as being able to look for funding, because people are very, very keen to get that restored. And a lot of the people, I would say to you, who've, because I've put onto the JustGiving website the individual small donations that we've been given as well, people have been giving reasonably large amounts of money, but also they've been given two quid, five quid, this is my five pounds, I've got two pounds, will this make a difference? Yes, it will. There are a lot of people out there who have given money, there are three hundred and eighteen different donations on the JustGiving site, but in terms of people giving money to Friends of Graves Park, through the donation box in the cafe and elsewhere, there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people who have donated, many of them anonymously, so people are very keen. So we will put that together with the money that we've already got from the lack area that has been promised, which is twenty-five thousand pounds, I think, but that ten thousand from the Friends of Graves Park's JustGiving, that will be more, I would say. When it comes to what it says about SCC delivering the Rose Garden Cafe restoration and refurbishment, I think it's fair to say that in that partnership, we are trying to, if you like, think outside the box. So this isn't, I think the whole partnership is very keen to make this different from what things have been, how things have been done before. The Friends have already said, we're not going to go and raise a shed load of funding and then just hand it over to Sheffield City Council. We're not prepared to do that, but I don't think that's what Sheffield City Council is asking us to do, I don't think that's what the subcommittee is wanting us to do. We're wanting to do this in a way that makes the local population happy, the citizens of Sheffield happy, and it's a way of, almost, it's like an experiment to see if we can, through this partnership, find a different way of working that makes everybody happy and also helps Sheffield City Council to work in a different way, in a positive way, to get funding for things in Sheffield, which is supported by the citizens of Sheffield. That's the way that we're hoping that it's going to go. And there are, the list of possible funds, there are a lot of places, including the National Lottery Heritage Fund, where the criteria of doing what we're doing in a partnership actually meets one of their criteria, in restoring the cafe so that it is sort of ecologically sustainable, meets some of their criteria. Being a place that is so important to the community and community groups meeting there meets some of their criteria. So from that perspective, I'm really very hopeful that we can do this, but we need that structural engineer's report done, and the first time it was mentioned was back in April last year, and we've nearly, nearly, nearly got one appointed, and we've nearly, nearly, nearly got it done, but, well, hopefully, it might have been done by the spring, whenever that is. So that's where we are at the moment, I hope that's explanatory.
Well, thank you very much to both of you for that presentation. Have members got any questions? Richard, Douglas?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both, that's very, very positive, and I think it's a great step forward, I fully understand your frustration, Caroline, it's taken so long to get here, but I think we are in a much better place than we were six months ago. And I know the new chair, Chris, quite well, and I know he will be a very good chair for you, he will ask the difficult questions, I'm sure he already has. It's, it's really good, I mean, yeah, structural engineer is key, also how the consultation goes, to find out what people want, I mean, there are funds around, I know, but the cost estimates are eye-watering to actually achieve what you want to achieve. I wish you well, and I hope the council can do as much as it can to support you without queering the pitch with various funding organisations, but thank you for your time and effort.
Thanks, yeah, just to echo what councillor Linds just said, thanks come forward, because it's been a big step forward compared to where we all were about eighteen months ago. So yeah, I don't know how you pulled that one out of the hat, but yeah, there's definite progress there, so yeah, it's really good, thank you very much.
Yeah, again, thank you ever so much for coming, it's really great to hear the reporting from the partnership, and I really hope this can be a bit of a model for how we approach different but similar questions in the future and that we learn a lot quicker from this, and it'd be great to hear from Chris at some point, if he's able to come, that'd be really great to hear from him as a chair of the partnership as well, and keep us as the members of the committee involved in how it's evolving. I was just going to comment, I think there's some really useful things inside the papers for this, and the whole, the thinking behind all the consultation and the development of the consultation, really pleased to see some really positive stuff in there about how that was developed. And again, just thinking about funding sources, having worked in this world, I think you're absolutely right, Caroline, that probably the key factors are around heritage, but also around community and how communities will use that building, so I'm sure that the consultation will be really valuable for that. But, and I do think it's, you know, it's really worth continuing to reflect on how different communities might use the building, because I think the two items together are really crucial, actually. Unfortunately, there isn't that much funding around just to restore buildings, which would be, and if there was, I'm sure there'd be massive competition for it, but the combination of those factors is so important, so thanks again for all your work on it.
Thank you, colleagues have already said what I wanted to say, but I'd just like to also say thank you to both. We are in a better place now than we were a few months ago, I remember sitting here last year at committee meeting, I'm feeling, feeling your frustration as the Friends of Graves Park, but I feel like progress has been made, and, you know, I like to say this is what good looks like, I hope the partnership continues, and I hope you have the success, but, you know, please do keep updating us on the progress, that'd be really useful, thank you very much.
You wonder sometimes whether, under declarations of interest, we're all very careful to declare an interest, and I'm thinking, well, obviously this is an item that affects the ward, I represent something I've taken a keen interest in over the years in the park. But a couple of things, wouldn't you have heard members around the table today say positive things in response to the positive things that you, Rebecca, and you, Caroline in particular, have had to say for the work that you're putting in and you're going to put in to raise money? I'm very firmly of the opinion that the cafe would not have been saved without the community campaign to save it, and I'm equally firmly of the opinion that there's been a bit of a false start in the early days in getting to where we are now, but I hope over a cycle of beating, you've heard a different tone from members about how we wish this partnership to succeed, and how we feel it could be a model for future working, because no matter how we rake over the cause of how we've got here, equally, we can't restore that building as people would wish, without help and drawing in resources from the, from the community at large and wider funding bodies. Officers maybe don't need too much sympathy, they work hard for us in trying to raise money, but officers and members are completely familiar with the situation where you have to apply for money, you have to make it fit the criteria of the funders, even though you want to get a good job done that really needs doing, the funding rules change. Central government is absolute masters at announcing schemes for large pots of money that we have to chase, and sometimes we get some of it, and sometimes we get, we get, we get none of it, but we mustn't forget that you're putting your time in for nothing, and you've put your time into this for a long time, and if you're ever not optimistic about the progress being made, you get back in here and rattle our cages, just actually right as well, and it's the right thing to do, keep that safe. Thank you. With that, it is page forty-seven of the Agenda Pack, it contains recommendations for approval on page forty-eight. Are we all agreed? We're all agreed, thank you. So that gets us on to the next item, which is Norton Nurseries, the glass houses. Item ten on the report in the Agenda, on page seventy-five, in the Agenda Pack, and Joe Pearce is going to report.
Hi, everybody, yes, I'm Joe Pearce, thank you for putting this item on the agenda, so I work within Ruth's team within Parks and Countryside, I'm really excited to be bringing this, this paper for a decision today. This is the decision around commissioning an operator to work within the glass houses at Norton Nurseries, and for the purpose of this item, I know there's been, you know, already a lot of talk around the nurseries, this is exclusively looking at the glass houses within that, so that's pretty relevant. The decision is to, I understand we've had some questions, so thank you for those, we've noted those, and I will try and cover off the majority of those within my responses, but as councillor Auckland has said, we'll send a written response afterwards. The, so the decisions we're seeking are around to commission an operator, we are not looking at a lease arrangement, we're looking at up to five-year licence to grant, the decision is to grant a licence and a concession arrangement. I'm excited, because this has been a couple of years discussions off the back of the food strategy in two thousand and twenty-three, Food, Chef Food Network, who are here today, that we've been talking a lot about how we, we as a council can support the food growing and the food system ambitions as outlined within that food strategy, and this is the bit that we think we can contribute at this point towards that, one of the ambitions around the identi- identification of space within the Norton, within Norton Nurseries, within the glass houses, but as a council, what can we be doing to do that? So that's the purpose of the paper. We, you walk around them, and I know you're going in a few weeks, and I know a lot of people here will have been in the space, it's beautiful, the glass houses are wonderful, but they're sat there doing very little. The, the question around investment, we're not expecting significant, you know, whole-scale investment. you know, whole-scale investment here. That is something that also sadly, you know, we've not got the funding or the budget for. In years to come, perhaps we might have. But what we're talking about is a licence that would enable an operator to be able to make that space work for them, for food growing. The contribution that the council would put towards that would be to make that space safe for someone to go into there. So the quote for the £5,000 to £10,000 for the works, that's around repairing glass panes, clearing the gutters, you know, fairly kind of basic work. So we've got quotes from glass house specialists. After that, and in terms of meeting the objects of the charity, it would be over to an operator to do that, to bring that investment. A five-year licence will enable them to do some of that. The expectation would be that anything infrastructure is needed to do, you know, to make that space suitable for food growing would be achieved by them. So hence the framing of the decision in that way. The consultation that we've gone through to get to this point, there's no current occupant of the glass houses in terms of the fact it's sat there not doing anything. So formally, there has been no consultation. But that doesn't, you know, detract from the significant amount of consultation that Chef Food have done. We've been part of that conversation for a number of years around identification of space for food growing, of which the glass house at Norton Nursery has been flagged in every conversation I've ever been at. So for within that, within the space, there have been conversations, but no formal consultation carried out. It's not a lease arrangement. It's an up-to-five-year licence arrangement. I think that was probably the majority of what I wanted to say. So unless anybody, yeah, I'll pause that and come to you for some questions if you have them.
There's any questions?
Yep, thanks. Yeah, I think this is a good way, because I can see that, you know, this is the way to maintain the glass houses for the, you know, for the benefit of the charity long term. How long have they been there, anyway? That's a bit of a side question, but how old are we talking about these? Do we know?
1983, Douglas, they were opened. They were computer controlled for their time. And they were said to be the most modern glass houses in Europe.
Okay, that is useful context. Yes, okay. As someone who was there at the time. Okay. What I just wanted to ask is about...
The council published a handy booklet to celebrate the event.
That'll be it. Yes. Thanks, Ian. I just wondered if you can tell us a bit more about how you visit the operation happening. So obviously, maintenance glass houses, good thing for the long term, a benefit of the charity. Licence, no issue with formal disposals there. And supporting food growing is a really good thing. That's obviously in line with other council objectives. So that's, yeah, that's just good. And it's something that we've struggled to really embark on the city. So all say good. Have you got anything in mind about how it would, what sort of thing you're expecting there?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. So we, the process would be a procurement process. So we're working closely with our colleagues in public health to support us with that because we're not food growing experts. We would like something that delivers against the ambitions as outlined in the report. So fairer, greener. These are what we're wanting to see, more sustainable. What comes forward, obviously, in going through a procurement process, we'll tease that out. We have included within, as you'll have seen in the report, that we would like to see voluntary, you know, volunteers working in the space, people coming into the glass houses at organised times to be able to access that. So not free-for-all access, but we would love to see that. Clearly, the benefits of the local primary schools, the local networks, we would love to see that type of thing happening within the space. So it's not just a, you know, closed doors, food growing, but actually, people are connecting with that because that's the whole part of what we're trying to do here, connecting people, connecting families. So volunteers, training, apprenticeship schemes, that type of thing would be included within the procurement. There are operational requirements which we've included in the report with the kind of access, obviously, of the site at the minute with vehicles and the needs for numbers of volunteers. So we would work that through with our area manager on the site. But, yeah, we're really looking for something supported by our public health that achieves what those ambitions are. And does the social outcome, delivers against the social outcomes that we know that that is kind of really important, that, you know, we might be connecting people into the space who might not be able to. So from a social isolation perspective, or the wider outcomes that you will be able to get from a programme such as this with staff and volunteers.
Okay. So the other question, I thought it was on procurement. That sounds good. I just wondered whether it's really focused that much. So I suppose what I'm really thinking is, are we looking at something that's sort of about social engagements or things that we want, where we'd be looking to pay an operator? Or are we looking at something that's, you know, more of a, yeah, a more commercial food growing arrangement? So I know we want a social enterprise, but I mean, one that's, you know, this is like an actual, you know, food production thing. And of course, it's why you say, yeah, most of us in the council don't know about food production. But you think of things like, you know, how forestry operations operate. I'm not suggesting we have forestry in the glass houses. But it's about the sort of the bigger aspects of just the reality of farming, if you like. Are we looking at that sort of thing where you might expect the operator to pay us for the use of the glass houses? Which sort of one are we looking at? Or is it something that will depend on the tender?
Yeah, I mean, we can't preempt that because we would go out to a process and that will be carried out in that way. But we are framing it with the food strategy at the heart, you know. And the way that that is talked about is delivering against social outcomes. So we would expect there to be the social outcome toolkit as monitored as part of that. So that, and being a charity site, you know, that we're not going to be subsidising it. I wish we did have budget to, you know, procure food growing, but we don't. What we can do is say, there is a space here, please occupy that. So the charity must be in a better position, which they would be through investment of the glass houses. However, at this stage, I think we hope to frame that in a way that delivers social outcomes, focuses on volunteering, connection to the green space, as opposed to, you know, commercial food growing entity. That's not the way that we have been heading towards this through the conversations and consultation with Chef Food. That's the way we would like to see it delivered.
I think, just to add to that, I think it's somewhere far closer to that, somebody providing us with an income. It is, we will not be paying somebody money to occupy those glass houses. But with regard to getting monies in, any contribution that came to the charity would likely be nominal. The benefits for the charity are in having that asset brought back into use and into a better condition. So we wouldn't be looking to pay somebody. We're unlikely to get significant funds, but they would be putting investment into that asset for the charity.
Right, thanks. That kind of makes sense. I suppose my last question is just about the procurement. And I think the reality is that there's a number of dilemmas in there. If you want lots of, you know, social engagement, social isolation, so that will come at a cost. We probably, and the answer that you gave was, I wasn't expecting that. We were going to be able to put money in it, of course, none's been identified. But we probably need to be realistic about the fact that all that work is unlikely to make enough return for an operator to be able to pay us for that. So, and I'm open to what could go on in there as long as it works. And so my only concern was that some of the detail in here seems bizarrely over-prescriptive for something that could be quite an open tender, where in procurement process, I'd really be looking for sort of the best available offer, addressing some of the criteria that you've mentioned, but not going into such detail there. So I just, I suppose what I worry wants to know is there's some reassurance we can have that if people can put in a tender that, you know, doesn't go down to the precise opening times, for instance, or the designated number of parking spaces, that that will be accommodated. So in other words, this report is not fixed in stone for the framework of the tender. Does that make sense? Otherwise, I think we're kind of setting ourselves up to fail in a bit of an arbitrary way.
It does make sense. I guess the only thing that we will need to frame it in terms of certainly health and safety on that site. So there will be some things that we need to be prescriptive about. But yes, we can certainly talk to procurement colleagues about whether there's flexibility in some of those things that we ask, and whether we consider things that perhaps don't meet all of the criteria, but are still achieving the aims for the charity and also for the group, food growing, food strategy side of it.
Yeah, okay. Just wondering if at the end we just need maybe to tweak the recommendation, but maybe we can have a look at that. Because I think that's a really important point there you're making, that it needs to be realistic, doesn't it, to get the best outcome without it being tied down to something arbitrary. Great, thank you.
councillor Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, very exciting proposal. And I hope we can get this off the ground. What timescales are you thinking of? Are we going to hit this growing season?
I suspect, Selina would say no. We would like to, after, you know, subject to a decision today, we've been working with procurement colleagues, so we'd be keen to get something out really as quickly as we could. So, yeah, but knowing that's likely to take a couple of months. So we could be there. I don't know when the best time specifically is to plant. So I think we might be a little bit after it. But definitely within this year, we would like to see that. So definitely leading nicely into the next growing season. But definitely concluding the procurement process in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Again, broadly support this. I think it's, you know, really positive to bring the space into use. I'm not sure I do agree with tweaking the recommendations either. I think it's good, actually, that we've got quite a detailed spec for the kinds of projects that we want to attract to it. And it feels to me that there's already enough scope in there to be flexible, if you like. I took Appendix A and B, I think, to be precisely around that health and safety stuff. And partly my question was, have we discussed with Chef Food and the people that we've consulted with, whether those kinds of constraints on the site will allow it to be fit for the purpose that you want it to be fit for, was one of my questions. Another was around, you talk about bringing investment into the building, which is fantastic. But on the licence, we're not going to bring substantial investment into a building unless people are holding a lease. You know, you can't really fundraise on the basis of a licence rather than a lease. So obviously, you can probably get some investment. And the fact that it's in use, I think in general, is a really positive thing. And the fact that people will be able to access it as volunteers. I did wonder particularly on the conditions around the maximum 30 people. You know, you talked about school groups, for example. Again, are these sufficient? Can the constraints of the site support what we're aiming to achieve there? And I think it's not the site itself, is it? It's everything else that's happening on the site at the moment, as we've heard in the public questions. So those were the bits I'm interested in. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So the first question around the constraints and the, does that work? Yeah, we've worked closely with Chef Food to understand whether or not they would be. And there's probably things like that, that, you know, until we go through the process and understand what that proposal is, it's a little bit hypothetical. But we broadly know that could work, that, you know, equally, so could a lot more space and a bit more vehicle parking and a bit more. But we know this is a site with lots of other things going on. So it's appropriate that we don't try and do too much. So, yes, we've talked about the detail there. And your point on the lease, we know that that is something that, yeah, ideally, the groups would have preferred a longer-term lease arrangement. But equally with what other things are going on at that site, we thought would recommend this would be a better way to go for it while those other things are worked through. But, yeah, that would limit the funding that people will be able to apply for. Thank you.
I think it could be helpful to say that in terms of access, it's a very short access route from the gate to the actual nursery site. Just as a matter of fact, it's, in terms of the health and safety access, it can be set out with a fairly short route to get there in this yellow paint. I find myself thinking that, really, I really welcome the report, because on and off over the years, there's been some activity in the glass houses. But they have stood the test of time. I mean, I am assured that they're in pretty good condition for the fact that they've had nothing spent on them for 20 odd years. And that in order to bring them into use as glass houses for growing food, it's not envisaged, it's going to cost a fortune. And that's encouraging, in a sense. Maybe the recomputerisation, its own weather station, all sorts. It was a real trailblazer in its time. Maybe they will come back one day. But functionally, the place works. I find myself thinking about public access, because you will know, I'm really keen to see an element of the public in there growing food, some educational activity, and the ability for people who might be interested to volunteering to come along. And back in the day, it just used to be a sign saying, open today or close today. And there possibly wasn't some of the plant and equipment that you have these days to manage and worry about. But I guess I feel on the health and safety point, you wouldn't really, these days, you wouldn't really say, well, it doesn't matter, just turn up. We would have to have some sort of stuff to say, this has got to be managed in some way, simply to do the job properly. But in terms of what councillor Johnson has said and councillor Belbin has said in the discussion, I think I would be right to say, in terms of what officers have described, how they see it working potentially, that's what we want to achieve. So we don't want to not achieve it because we haven't got 27 IVs best, and it should be 20 people, not 20 people, not 25, and all the rest of it. We want to see them back in use and engaged again with the public. I mean, as an aside, there used to be an entire section in that nursery dedicated to civic floral displays. Not just, you know, it said it was a small section, but it was a section. Happy days, I think, to some extent, maybe not to return.
Just to come back on that. So I think it's probably worth saying that the people that would hopefully be working within the glass houses, they would be inducted on-site and they would be taught how to move around the parts of the site that they had access to safely. So that is one element of it. The other element of public access is something that we are looking to address. You're absolutely right. It's an operational site. We can't just have people turning up and be sure that they're going to be safe if they're just wandering the site. But that is not to say that we can't select dates where we allow public access and where we limit our vehicle movements and where we make sure that people can be accompanied around the site and as much as they need to be, so that they can see what goes on on that site. I think the two things can happen alongside each other. And we are looking to deal with that second point, that how do we get people into Norton Nurseries, people that want to see that site, see what we do there, see how it's used currently. So we will continue to explore that and work out how quickly we can do that. We do believe that we can do it. We just can't do it five days a week if we're going to operate and maintain Graves Park and obviously the surrounding sites. But it's not to say that we can't do it. We can do it. We just need to explore it and then publicise that so that people can come and see what goes on there.
And the considerations would be the same. If the nursery site was entirely used for operational purposes entirely in the park, we'd still have to consider managing access in modern circumstances, probably for the public good. Douglas, are you content at this stage?
Yeah, yes, I think so. I mean, I said I was pondering the recommendations. I'm going to look at, for a bit of legal advice. I think, actually, it probably gives enough fluidity here. I mean, so Recommendation 2 talks about, as a delegating authority, to procure in accordance with this report. And then just looking at the cross references there. So that, I think, the indication is that Appendix 1 is not actually prescriptive, it's just something that will be expected. I was talking, for instance, about sort of exact times of operation. It seems to be unrealistic and incompatible with how farming works. It's not that you'd be exceeding those hours every day, but it seems a bit arbitrary. So as long as there's flexibility around that, then my reading of this report would be that. But I suppose I just want some reassurance. So probably, I mean, I think you're nodding, probably sort of legal advice, does the recommendation... recommendation say in broad enough terms what I think it says? Does it give scope for a sensible procurement, in other words? Yeah, sorry. Paragraph 1.8 on page 78 says, the select operator will be expected to meet the operational requirements as outlined in Appendix A. And this will assess during a scoping process, you know. And it says, and will ensure the safety and protection of all users within the nursery site. So if it's wide enough to say that it will meet those aims of health and safety, without being too prescriptive.
Yeah, I think that's the intended cross reference. So to give you some reassurance of the kind of basic parameters or the in principle parameters that will be included in a procurement. Obviously, you need to make the decision today as to whether this is in the best interests of the charity. So you need to understand what the charity is getting out of that. Because the proposal that's been put forward to you is not a purely commercial enterprise. So it's not simply about how much money you are going to make as a charity, it's about other benefits in terms of the charitable objects, which obviously talk about improving the conditions of life for the inhabitants of Sheffield. It's to ensure that you've got a feel for the sort of things that would be being commissioned on your behalf. So I think there's enough latitude in that wording to indicate that it's broadly compatible with Appendix A, with some discretion around that, in terms of making sure that a sensible tender is received.
Councillor Belbin, did you want to come in? I thought we were going to bottom this. I mean, we can bottom it if we're happy with the recommendations. So there are recommendations on page 76 of the report, and we all agreed.
Yeah, with that reassurance, yeah, great, thanks.
So we're all agreed, it's unanimous. Right, I just wondered whether we should take members with your agreement, Weston Park next, as it's due, and it's of a similar ilk, I think. And then we'll do with tram lines? Is that okay? Yeah, let's do that then.
Yeah, and thank you, that's really positive. And I'm also excited about this one. So we're seeking a decision here for us to work through a negotiation potentially with an event company, who are wanting to run a festive light trail in Weston Park this Christmas, well, this, sorry, November into December period. We have been working with colleagues in events, oh, they were there, for, well, over a number of years, we work really closely together. We've got some wonderful events in sites across the city, lots in parks and some of our woodland sites. We don't have a significant kind of festive animation offering. Anyone who's got little kids will know, and I get badgered to go to all sorts of things around that period. And actually, I go outside Sheffield a little bit. I've been up to Barnsley, to the Cannon Hall Farm, and Matlock Farm Park, and lots of others. And when we were kind of approached around this one, we would love to be in with a chance of giving it a go. What a festive light trail is, is that it's a kind of in the dark light trail around various animations. You take your family, whoever it is, around that light trail. It's a mile route, so it would require some kind of grass matting over grass to get a mile route within Weston Park. It would be for an up to 10 week period, inclusive of setup and set down. It would be a ticketed event, so it is a commercial offer. And what that would mean therefore, for the charity, would be a licence fee paid back to the charity account. What it would do for Sheffield is deliver a really fantastic event. They're a really reputable company that we know through the experience of the events team. They've got a proven track record, they deliver an event in Cardiff, a significant big festive event there. Also Newcastle, round Hay Park. And they're wanting to add one more to the, one more city this year. So a decision today that we're seeking would be, if they were to choose Sheffield, would we, you as trustees, approve us granting a licence to the event company, on the basis of that concession fee coming back? If we make the decision, together with Gary and events, we would continue to negotiate, and they may choose not to. And there's a point in the paper about us being able to explore other things of this nature for that site, because there's a lot of interest, it feels very appropriate, fitting with the museum and with the site. We know from the children's hospital, there's charitable benefits there, they're really keen, the museums are really up for being involved in that and could see a nice partnership approach together with them, as well as Sheffield Uni, lots of positive interactions. So I shall pause there, anything to add? And take any questions you might have, thank you. Gary walked out and I was bringing you in, but you weren't there. This is Gary. So yeah, no, I was just talking about Weston Park, thank you.
Thank you, Jo. Members, any questions? No? Oh, Richard?
Thank you, thank you for the report. Yeah, again, very exciting. Let's hope we can get it off the ground. My only one, not reservation, is, it might be in the report, but I can't see it, is Weston Park is often used as a cut through for a lot of people from the hospital and university. How can we accommodate that?
Yeah, really good point. It's lit as well during those, you know, for safety for everyone walking through at that time of night. And it is used as a thoroughfare to get to Crooks Valley Road for a lot of the hospital staff. So we would, we've talked about that, potentially thinking about security on Mushroom Lane. But similarly, through some observations we've seen in the last few weeks, people do often tend to walk through, past the Arts Tower, connected onto Crooks Moor Road that way. So it's talking about that together with hospitals, with the partners, and with the events company, if we get that far, to say, what can we put in place that makes people feel safe if they were to need to go around at that time? So we would work with the event company to do that.
Douglas? Thanks, that was one of my questions there. I just wondered also if it's worth asking the operator if there could be a bit more provision of some extra lighting on a temporary basis, if that's considered necessary, depending on the assessment of the site. So I wonder if you could take that away? Yeah, I thought this is, you know, a good thing. It makes sense, it's important, I think it's a one year trial, because again, you're talking about a 10 week closure of the park, and appreciate the differences that, you know, with things like tram lines, say, this isn't a, this is only a closure in the afternoon and evening, isn't it? So it's, with the tickets, so what sort of ticket price are we looking at based on their other events?
Varying prices depending obviously on concession fee, families. So we've not got into that detail with them at the minute, that's something we would be negotiating as, at this point, we're...
Sorry, that's meaning what do they charge in the other places where they actually charge tickets, not what they're actually going to charge here?
I'll send you the detail back over unless Gary, yeah?
I'll Google it later.
I'll send you it.
Yeah, that's okay. I was asked to point out there's an error in here. It does say 3.1, that officers are in regular dialogue with local councillors. And I was just asked to bring up on behalf of the local councils, that's not true, because they were only informed about this the day this was made public. So I was just asked yet to raise that, I just wondered if that can be noted in the minutes, that that's actually incorrect? But where they have been briefed on it now, and yeah, I'm sure there'll be, hopefully come with reassurance, there will also be ongoing dialogue with them. Thank you very much. And again, just the overall balance for the park there. So understand that the operator will pay a licence fee for use of the park, that will go into the park, but then I think you're saying that the corresponding money provided by the council will go down. So the net amount of money for maintenance of the park will stay the same. So that park won't be any better off. Where do we stand with that? And given the fact that actually you're talking about having a lot of people through there, there's going to be a lot more wear and damage to the park? Just tell us what's going on there.
So obviously, we're going to talk about tram lines next. What we would propose is a similar arrangement with tram lines. So obviously, any damage to the park, it is the event operator's role to put that right at their cost. That is not something that will be charged to the charity, they have to restore to the park to the condition that it was before they went in. What we would suggest is that, yes, in light of reducing budgets everywhere, the amount that is paid to the Weston Park charity, as by way of a grant by Sheffield City Council, would reduce in light of this amount. It does however provide security to the Weston Park charity, because our budgets cannot go down below that amount. But similar to tram lines, what we would suggest is that an amount of money is ringfenced to Weston Park, to allow improvements to that park that wouldn't otherwise be funded. So not to do the day to day business as usual stuff, but rather so that that park sees a benefit from that event, something that, so as a really current example, we think that the bridges may well need some work in that park going forward. That would likely be an expensive improvement, that might take quite a while to get the money together to do it. But for example, if you ringfence an amount of money from the event fee, we can do it quickly and we can improve that part for the people that live nearby and visit that park.
Right, that's fine. I think that's really important to get across, show that there will be some benefit, because there is also the risk that the park will be trashed, you know, because of slightly unforeseen circumstances, in a way that can't be put right easily or quickly by the operator, how much they pay. I mean, I suppose we want to know that there's something in the procurement that gives us a guarantee. Or if, say, it takes them much longer than the scheduled time where it has to be closed off for health and safety reasons, you should have some reassurance on that. Otherwise, I mean, I think the difference here is that, the reason I was asking about the ticket prices, is presumable of the anticipated audience is really the same sort of families who would like to use Weston Park anyway, you know, who are the beneficiaries of the charity, if you want to look at it in those terms. And just be expected to pay a modest fee for things that go on on those particular evenings in the winter.
Would you like Gary to come and join us to answer your questions on putting the park right and what happens if it's best placed to do that?
How much the event is in Newcastle this year? So it's about £60 there, £60 for a family. Which is pretty good, actually. I mean, the idea of this event is for it to be about an hour and a half, so it's a walk.
Will you do a quick introduction?
Apologies. I'm Gary Clift, the major events manager for the council. So yes, it's about an hour and a half. And it's different from a music festival, it isn't a music festival, this is a walk. And yes, the potential is for 70, 80, 100,000 people, but that's over six weeks. So that's four, 5,000 a day, slowly coming in and out. And the general idea is for the vast majority of people to walk on the path, not on the grass. So the idea is that the activations and the lights will be on the edges of the path, over the lake, that type of thing, and people will stay on the hard standing. The park is slightly smaller than the organisers would have liked, so there may be a couple of crossovers to get, because they want to give people the value for money. So they want to make it a worthwhile, they need about a mile, a mile's worth of walk. So there will be probably one or two crossing points over the lawn, but they'll be protected. But again, it's a walk, people aren't running, people aren't dancing, it's not masses of people, because you won't want that as a family or with your friends or with a couple, you know, there'll be people in fours and fives and sixes walking through. So it's, so yes, there will be inevitable damage, of course there will, it's November and December. But it won't be to the extent of what you would find with a high footfall mass event that a music event can bring, if that helps.
Thanks, that's actually really helpful to describe how it would work, yeah. I suppose actually my first instinct is £60 for a walk in the park for a family is, still seems quite a lot, quite a lot for a lot of families. But maybe you can see what you can do with different pricing and whatever.
Just to come in on that, in terms of other festive, you know, around £100 per family is sort of the going rate for a festive experience at sites within Sheffield, as well as sites outside the city. So for that type of, you know, hour and a half, yeah, you pay for an immersive experience with, you know, Mrs Claus and a mince pie, gets us off.
And I think, I mean, we need to, well, one, we need to be, we need to be given the chance to do it, and then we get into the devil of the detail. But from the imagery that we've seen, and I don't know if people have seen it, it's pretty spectacular. You know, it's not a few twinkly lights and a few baubles, it's pretty impressive. And actually, something we want in this city, dare I say, from a cultural vibrancy point of view and a visitor experience point of view, it will be very, very impressive.
Do you want to come in, Naz?
Thank you, thank you for that. I think this is something that Sheffield definitely needs. Every year during the festive period, we start looking for places to take children, but also for adults, adults who get excited around Christmas time, and I'm one of those. You know, we end up going out of Sheffield, to be honest, to these type of events. So I think it's really exciting, and I think that in terms of the recommendations, yes, I think we should have that extra conversation for this, because I think it'll be great for Sheffield. I also am hearing what councillor Johnson's saying, and I totally agree in terms of the cost. So we just need to make sure that families get valuable money out of this. And obviously, these are negotiations, the conversations you'll be having with them if they agree to come here in the first place. I think firstly, we need to get them to come here. And we do need to think about the price, because I know there's going to be rides and other things in the park as well, other activities, you know, will there be an extra cost for them, you know? So we need to look at the whole package, what we're getting back from that. But again, all these conversations can happen afterwards, once they've agreed to come. But I think, yeah, for Sheffield, definitely, I know lots of families that leave Sheffield at this time of year to go to similar things in other parts of the country. And we really want to, you know, provide something for local families to be able to come in Sheffield. So yeah, I think, exciting. Thank you.
Presumably, it's LED lighting and sustainable electricity, they'll be mindful of that sort of thing. I mean, I think it's a bit pricey, so it makes it all the more important. I think members have made the general point over time now, that we've got to show, in the case of a charity park at any rate, as well as we stabilising funding, but there is something to show for it that people can point to. And particularly at £60 to go, I guess, I'm thinking, the people who can't afford £60 and use the park freely, would like to see something they can point at to for real benefit. So I think that's an important point, well made by members. I've been to one of these in Brodsworth, run by English Heritage, it wasn't such a mild thing, I don't think, but it was quite extensive and good to experience. And exactly as Gary has said, it's on paths, most nearly all on paths, and bits and pieces to see as you go around. So it's not a damaged thing. I do ask myself quite a bit, you know, when I look at this, and think, well, somebody gave us this land in 1857, what would they think today? They might well be thinking people should be walking around carrying flaming torches and that sort of stuff. I'm sure health and safety would have something to say about that these days. So I look and I think, this is not turning the park, you know, into some sort of mass mud park deliberately, as you see advertised in some places. I think this is an event consistent with certain things that you might expect to see in a park, a fun event that's going to draw families in and benefit the park. So I think this is a good thing too. Yeah, also, apologies.
Thank you Chair, for letting me come back. I think there's still observations really. One, because of the time of year, it will actually extend the use of the park, because apart from people walking through it, they don't use Weston Park in the winter, because it's dark. So that's a really good positive. And I think the other thing is that, because it's a one year test pilot, whatever you want to call it, it's going to be in the interest of the company to make it good value. Because you see these other parks, you see them on Facebook all the time, these other things, and this is rubbish, a waste of money, not going again, it'll just die. And in fact, I imagine what a lot of people do is wait and see what it's like before they book. Because it's ten weeks. So it will have to be good value for it to succeed. Because otherwise, people just will come back next year or even later on this year.
So there is a... Oh, sorry. Sorry, just one more question. I mean, just think about the cost then. As I say, you could be getting a hundred thousand people through the gates. And if it was all families, where the family ticket's sixty quid, you could be talking about quite a bit, I mean, sort of twelve, fifteen million pounds that the operator would take in ticket sales, just as a very rough estimate. Just looking at the fee that being a term of closing appendix.
If you want to talk about the fee, do we want to go into a closed session?
I don't want to mention anything. My question is simply, you know, are we looking at getting enough value out of that? Should we be looking at... I appreciate it's in negotiation, isn't it? Should we be looking at fixing it? Should we be looking at something that increases with visitor numbers? So that if it is really successful and they make, you know, literally millions out of it, that we get a fair proportion of that to put back into the park?
I was just about to say that there's a part two element, that if members want... And you've not gone there, and I take it we're not going to do that. But again...
The short answer is yes. The long answer is, as councillor Sahira said, we need to get them here first. We need to make our offer attractive to get them here. We are in competition with other cities. We know that. They've told us that. Whether that's the truth or not, but I have no reason to suggest it isn't. Yes, there is a big potential, big ticket item attached to their event. They've got to sell the tickets. And I would also suggest there's a massive level of investment they've got to make in the event in the first place to make it attractive. So, you know, they will have to invest significant amounts of money to make this a worthwhile installation for people to come and enjoy and spend their money. So I think there's a number of discussions to be had with them. You know, being really honest, this is a new event for us in all its senses. So we need to understand, I don't really have anything else to benchmark it with other than other events that we do, but we don't do anything like this. So it feels about right. The explanation they've given to us as to how they start doing year ones and year twos if they get to that, pricing structures kind of makes sense to me in the world that I live in. But, yeah, we should always be looking to get best value for anything that we do. So, yes, in short.
So with that, there's recommendations on page one hundred and two in the report pack. Are we all agreed the recommendations? I'll take silence as a sent. Right, that's agreed then. So we then go back one step in the agenda to tramlines. Again, tramlines has a restricted element, so if members want to discuss that specifically, we'll not have to. We might, yes, maybe one person to go. Ruth? Yo, Gary.
Gary's going to start, if that's okay?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening and seeing us again. There's obviously been lots and lots of discussions about tramlines over the past year or so. And I also recognise we didn't really get a chance to discuss the report at the last meeting. So if people bear with me, I'd like to read through a few things that I think are important, if that's okay. And then obviously take questions at the end, if that's okay. Obviously, the charities asked to consider the contents of this report and, you know, make a decision as to whether the tramlines are licensed to use Hillsborough Park. Some of the recommendations agree that hosting the festival in Hillsborough Park represents a positive benefit for the park on balance. Agrees that the heads of terms that we've put in place now are more reflective of an event of this size and scale that we hadn't done before in candour. Approve the changing fee schedule now. And agree, which has just been picked up at the Western Park event, the ten thousand pounds of additional fee to improve or replace something within the park on top of normal business as usual that Ruth's team would undertake. Hillsborough Park is a charity and obviously, and trustee of Sheffield City Council. The trustee subcommittee has been asked to make a decision on any other matter that has significant impact on the use of a charitable asset for the charitable purposes for reasons of duration, area of the asset impacted or other restrictions, which is kind of where tramlines sits as an event. I think it's worthwhile just going through how we've got here. In two thousand and eighteen, tramlines events were granted a premises licence to hold the event at Hillsborough Park. Now, all that allows them to do is carry out licensable activity on the ground on those dates. They do pay a licence fee, but that sits within the licensing service. That's a legal obligation, so that funding just sits there. A premises licence does not give them automatic right to occupy, and this is the next bit. So now they've got a licence to occupy, which talks about the detail of the event. We're referring to that now as the licence agreement. That agreement covers such things as health and safety, safety and security, reinstatement of the site, liability termination, force majeure fees, and really importantly, grounds protection, because we know that's really important to people now. The current licence agreement was granted in two thousand and eighteen. And obviously, well, actually, before last year's festival, we were already discussing a revised agreement, because I think both parties, ourselves and TEL, recognised it didn't give us, either of us, the cover that it needed or go into detail some of the things that we needed to look at in the delivery of the event. And obviously, that was exacerbated somewhat by the adverse weather in twenty twenty-three. The review included strengthening a number of clauses for protecting the park in the event of severe weather or other force majeure, and how decisions around cancelling the event would be taken place and by whom. We also then talked about one of the points that councillor Johnson brought up around the fees. We've revised the fee structure now that's in the closed appendix. I'm comfortable now that that does give us best value. We know more about music events than we do some of the other events that take place in the city. So we can benchmark with what we charge those events. I've spoken to a few operators that operate out of the arena, and they're in agreement with our charging fees. And we've also spoken to event promoters outside of Sheffield as to how they market and charge their fees. Obviously, from a promotions point of view, you're in competition with everybody. So you never quite know the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. But you can also go on the experience that we have around charging for events. What TEL have requested is that part of the funding that we mentioned earlier goes directly into putting something back into the park to install, renew or to replace something that wouldn't ordinarily happened without the festival being there. That amount's up to ten thousand pounds. TEL have also offered and already doing so their customers an option to make a voluntary contribution on top of their festival ticket. TEL will also donate five hundred pounds per annum to friends groups working with Hillsborough Park. That's a given now. We can't disclose the staging fee. That's commercially sensitive and has been agreed by the information, by the commission's office at the end of January. The event contributes on a number of fronts. Events are so important for Sheffield, as I think we've just discussed at the previous item, builds Sheffield brand, Sheffield's reputation. Tramlines is one of the UK's longest-running urban music festivals and is a highlight in Sheffield's year-round calendar events, and also strongly supports the Fringe at Tramlines. So, yes, there's the Fringe, there's the Hillsborough event and there's the Fringe at Tramlines event, which is a free music festival in the city centre. That wouldn't happen without Hillsborough taking place. Again, important, if Tramlines were in Hillsborough Park, it would move out to Sheffield and relocate to another site outside of Sheffield. Again, we've explored many, many other things that we could and couldn't do, and Hillsborough is the right place for the event. I think it's important to talk about the local resident ticket scheme. In two thousand and twenty-three, one thousand six hundred and fourteen discounted or free tickets were distributed to residents in the immediacy of Hillsborough Park. And that's done very thorough, very detailed in a ballot basis. And that's been answered in some of the question-and-answer questions that were asked at the last charity subcommittee. But I can provide those again if people wish. And again, from a postcode survey that tramlines themselves have provided to us, we know that over eight thousand of the thirty-five, forty thousand people that go to tramlines are from Essex. So assume they still want it to continue. TEL also have a strong charitable arm and a strong tramlines trust. Since two thousand and eighteen, they've generated over two hundred thousand pounds for local charities, given away five hundred free tickets to key workers, charities and carers, sixty-eight work placements for local university students, and offered over two hundred paid slots for local emerging artists. So it's become a bit of a hotbed and a growth for the local music scene, as well as the fringe. That really helps as well. We readily acknowledge tramlines involves closures of the park. We readily accept that. But we feel that, you know, together with the licence fee, the donations, the uplifting, uplifted donations, and the fact that, you know, upwards of twenty percent of the people that attend the festival are from the local area. We've had a number of testimonies from local businesses within the area that have noticed a significant uplift in their trade and see it as a kind of second Christmas for them, which is really important. That's why tramlines existed. That's why it was created in July, actually, in the city centre fifteen, sixteen years ago. You know, students have left, so it's a bit of an improvement to the local bar and trade and music industry. What it also does, obviously, the years of austerity for the council are a challenge. This income guarantees certainty for the charity. So, you know, and helps the city to, for it to be a city park and to maintain its green flag status. There hasn't been any specific consultation about this report. But there is each year quite a significant consultation undertaken by the tramlines team. They meet with stakeholders on a regular basis and have already been meeting with stakeholders every year. They have two dropping sessions over at the Hasse site. One took place in November. That's generally about the previous year's event. And then they'll have another one in spring that talks about the upcoming event. There were thirty-nine attendees. General issues were raised, parking, noise, antisocial behaviour. Of course, damage to the park was important this year. But generally, in the main, it was positive. And people were interested and wanted to help support the festival and keep it going. They expect a higher turnout in the spring. I won't, particularly, there's equality implications there. Tramlines won't, our fee won't materially change tramlines fees again, based on the other discussion, unless they sell their tickets at market value, then people won't buy them. So it has to be fit for purpose. Financial and legal implications have been written by legal and financial teams, so I won't even try to read those for it because that trusts Sarah and our finance teams. The licence agreement is for a rolling period, so it's not fixed. It'll keep going as the premises licence is the same. It's in perpetuity. So it'll just keep going until some things change. Again, important for me, from a climate point of view, tramlines are really proud of their green credentials when it comes to a festival. They're one of the few operators that use renewable diesel to reduce greenhouse commissions, low-consumption hybrid generators. All of their waste is taken not to landfill but away from landfill. They seek out local suppliers, range of low-powered vegan food. And interestingly, which is something we've not picked up on this year. And again, that's why, one of the reasons Hillsborough Park was chosen for the festival, is that over fifty-five percent of customers that came to the event either walked or used public transport, which is huge for, you know, thirty-five thousand people, three days. That's pretty seismic. We did consult alternative options. You know, we considered a ten-year agreement. We felt that was too long and tied us in collectively. We talked about a fee structure that would be inflammatory. But again, we figured, we came to the conclusion that if we got a fixed higher fee now for the next five years, we knew what we would get. And that helped tramlines to future plan, future-proof their budgets. There was an option to do nothing and leave the agreement as it was, but I think that would leave us open, both of us. So we decided not to do that. The reasons for the recommendations, the licence agreement provides protection for Hillsborough Park charity from a funding point of view and is in the best sense of the park, in our opinion. The fee structure provides best value and income certainty. And Sheffield and Hillsborough, I think it's important to say, Sheffield and Hillsborough will continue to benefit from the social, cultural and economic benefits derived from hosting the event, both at Hillsborough and the Fringe at Tramlines in the city centre. We talked a lot about the agreement, and I hope that the heads of service, the heads of terms that we've illustrated here are reflecting the big changes that are now in the agreement. The agreement is over fifty pages long now. We're as near as damn it as we can be to signing it. Obviously, we won't sign it until you give us the approval. But, yeah, we're as close to signing that as we can be. I think importantly, none of us dismiss what's happened. I think that's really important to say. It was a hard weekend and it's been a difficult year. We all recognise what happened. We all saw what happened. And it's heavy with a lot of us. None of us took it for granted and none of us dismissed it. Equally, I would say that none of us walked away from the problem either, including tramlines. They were immediately on the problem. They immediately started to rectify the problem and they've paid for the problem. So I think that's really important. There was no discussion once about it being an issue. They were just straight on the job and getting working with our parks teams on reinstating the site to the best that they can do. We've learnt some lessons. We've all learnt lessons. Again, that's important. We've learnt what the site can and can't do, how it reacts to water, where the main access egress points are. Again, really important. Tramlines have paid for the renewal of a path, which was a major issue, actually. And that's quite a significant improvement for tramlines, but actually a significant improvement for the park, I would say, because that's helping the cycle for all guys, you know, the park-run guys, families just walking in the park. That's probably the best park served now with wide paths anywhere in the city, I would suggest. So that will make a huge improvement. There's been significant work done on drains, which again might not sound important, but we realise is very much important. So the park now is significantly more resilient this year than it was this time last year. And again, the important bit is lessons learned. So the licence obligation talks about the term, the event fee, additional income and fee stipulations, termination notice. Again, importantly, both ourselves and tramlines have the right just to say, we don't want to do this anymore. Obviously, that's the detail that we're getting into on the agreement. We can't immediately say you're not doing it this year, because we talked about this before. It doesn't work like that for a big festival like tramlines. So, but they're, both tramlines themselves and ourselves as a team, as a council, have the right to terminate. Importantly, the licence agreement can be terminated immediately where we feel there is a material breach in their use of the site. And that wasn't in before, but it is in now. And that talks about the normal stuff, you know, the stuff that we often forget about when it comes to events, event safety and the premises licence. They are uppermost in everything that we do on an event, and that was actually uppermost in everything that we did last summer. Safety was paramount in everything that we did. But obviously now, appropriate insurances are in place. But also, within the agreement now, there's a duty on tramlines to protect the park and administer the ground protection plan that's in place. So we'll meet two months before, a month before, a week before. We'll look at the long-range weather. We know where the crossing points are now. We know where the heavy footfall areas are now. So they can plan for ground mitigation measures. And we will tell them to call them in or not call them in, dependent on the weather. So we've got those plans in place now. We've got a cancellation and postponement programme within the agreement. And protection of the park is uppermost in everything that we're doing. Again, the cancellation of the event due to severe weather will always rest with the event organiser. It can never rest with us, but we have a strong part to play in that decision. Our health and safety teams will be on site. Event management team will be on site, from my point of view. Our licensing teams will be on site, along with safety advisory group, and we will make the right decisions, dependent on the prevailing weather. I won't go on, because I'm assuming there are a number of questions, but I think that's about it, Ruth. Does that cover everything? Thank you.
So, well, do you want to add anything, Ruth?
No, I'm satisfied that Gary's covered everything.
I'd describe that as comprehensive, certainly, Gary. Thank you very much. But comments from, oh, sorry, questions or comments from members? Any? I hear none. Ah, right.
So, Chair. Firstly, thank you very much for this. I mean... I mean, I was amazed when I found out that there was no real grown up agreement for an event like Tram Lines. And I think it's, as you said, it's well overdue and it is very comprehensive. I'm particularly pleased to see the thought that's gone into the protection of the park. Because, I mean, we couldn't get the years right, we couldn't, to repeat last year would be bad news for everyone. In terms of cancelling the events, you've just said that that ultimately lies with Tram Lines. What happens if we as a council think it should be cancelled and they just refuse to do so?
Gary, are you happy you can answer that without going into commercially sensitive detail? Or do we need to go into closed session? Okay.
We have the right, from a health and safety point of view. It sounds a bit obvious, but somebody gets the red pen out and issues a prohibition notice. Our licensing or our health and safety team will issue a prohibition notice to Tram Lines organisers to say, you cannot go ahead. Yeah, no, I think a great job has been done. And yeah, I mean, Tram Lines, I get, as Chair of Parks Committee, I get as many letters begging me to make sure it's not cancelled as I do from people saying, please cancel it. So it is a marmite thing. I find it interesting that so many people from the local area attend it. But not everybody's going to like it, but as a piece for Sheffield, it's a great event in my opinion.
I thought councillor was going to say he gets a free ticket, I'm sure he declares. Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks, councillor Williams, there's some valid points there. I mean, I suppose the element of the room is the big damage to the park that was done this year. But to be fair, it has happened in previous years, it's just that this year was exceptionally bad. And the question is what happens in those circumstances? I mean, the problem is that, you know, looking at the park now, you know, it's still not fully recovered. A lot of it's still waterlogged because of the damage that's been, I mean, what do we say to people about that?
There's further work to be done, certainly at the bottom end of the field. Equally, I think it would be fair to say that's not unusual for the amount of water that's come down in the autumn and winter and for that part of the park to look like it looks. I think if I got Andy Phillips in the room, you know, and Andy's, you know, one of our oldest serving managers of our park sites, and he would say, it's not unusual for it to look like that. Equally, I'm not suggesting either Tram Lines hasn't exacerbated the problem, you know, we're not blind to that, I think. So there's further work to be done at the bottom end of the field and that needs to be done this month. Because we start growing season in, at the end of March, beginning of April. So there's a plan already in place to start rectifying that, Douglas, and put some more drains in to do that. I think it would be, again, I think everybody's learnt lessons from last year. Ourselves and Tram Lines don't want to see that again, won't see that again. You know, without breaking too many confidence commercially, it wasn't, it's not been great for Tram Lines for this to happen, to be fair, and that's sometimes a driver of decisions. It was all on health and safety last year, it absolutely was. But I think as things changed on that Sunday, it just changed the whole look and feel and complexion and complexity of what needed to be undertaken. So I think all I would give assurance of are that both ourselves and Tram Lines have learnt lessons for that not to happen again. Because, being candid, that's probably a material breach. And that's not what they want and it's not what we want and it's not what we want to give the residents of Hillsborough Park or the people of Sheffield.
Okay, thanks. Actually, you answered the question already about when it's going to be done. So it's good news if the drainage work is going to be done this month. And it's referred to in the report, isn't it, saying that, yeah, plans on the way to further improve drainage? I mean, it's a massive issue there. I mean, can you tell us how much this is going to cost? How much work is going to be and how long is this going to take?
A team's working on the costing. That should be met by Tram Lines, but it's got to be done this month. Because we need, we need growing season. It's got to be done this month. There's further work to be done on the main field, so there's additional fertilisers, so it's going to get spiked as soon as it's not as wet as it is. It's going to get fertilised again to bring some more rapid growth through in the April, May, June months before the Tram Lines team move back in again.
I mean, it says here that the work will be funded by Tram Lines and SCC. So is that not true there?
Apologies. Go on. Some of the drainage work we've done, because they were our drains, that needed repairing and have needed repairing for a long time, to be fair. The new drains that are needed to replace because of Tram Lines is down to Tram Lines, so that's why it's both of us. And it's really hard to articulate which bits are different in the report because there's four or five different pieces of drainage work being done. Yeah, there's four or five different pieces, Douglas.
To be clear, Tram Lines' role is to restore the park and get it back to good after the event. So that's the work that they're doing. That's not to say that there aren't other parks works needed within the park. So where there have been things that have needed to be done that haven't happened because of Tram Lines or been exacerbated because of Tram Lines, obviously that's a parks and countryside issue. So what we've done is had two bits of work working alongside each other so that everything is being resolved hopefully at the same time with us doing the bits that we needed to do, Tram Lines doing the bits that they're required to do. And hopefully it'll result in a park that doesn't have the issues that it's had last year and in previous years with regards to drainage, because it has been an issue for a number of years.
Okay, that's, I mean, I think it's, I think it's obviously really good that that work's taking place. It's just the bottom line is that, you know, we've seen the damage caused, you know, it puts a large part of the park out of commission for, you know, actually now, a large part of the year. And even the hope we have a more successful, less rainy season next year is still at a big risk there. It's just hard to see how it's, if you're looking at it in terms of, you know, the park as a charity, it's still hard to see how taking the park out of commission for purposes, the charitable purposes, really stacks up. Which is different from saying that, you know, whether Tram Lines is a good thing for the city. And I think that's the dilemma we've got here. I don't think anyone's saying that Tram Lines shouldn't happen. But in terms of, you know, the charity and how it goes in this, I think the big difficulty really is that if there's only, when you're talking about, the reason I was asking about the cost of the drainage is because, as you'll know, it's quite a lot of money, isn't it? Because it always is when it's groundwork there. If the only benefit, Hillsborough Park gets out of this, basically an extra 10 grand. Okay, 500 quid for the Friends Group, but 10 grand, it's really quite frivolous amounts compared to the amount of money that's been, that's needed in the park and has been spent on it. So I'm just looking at the figures, I mean, you know, the money that the council put in the park was cut by 50,000 last year. And if it's going to be cut further to compensate for the money that comes in from Tram Lines. So it's neither here nor there in the scheme of spending that's needed in there. It's really hard to see how without more of an input, that it's really the benefit of the park charity. And, you know, of course, that's before you go on to the issue about how it benefits of the wider area of Hillsborough and the businesses there, which were complaining they were largely excluded by the ticketing, no re-entry policy. But just for the park itself, is there any way of increasing the amount of money that's safeguarded from the fee? I mean, you know, it says we can get 10k, if we can at least get 20k, I mean, that might be a little bit better. Is that within the scope of what we can agree as a council?
We've set out in the report what we're recommending to you. Obviously, you can ask us for changes. To be clear, we feel that the charity benefits because there is some security in its funding that doesn't exist from general revenue funding. Revenue funding has been cut year on year and we're likely to see ongoing cuts if only the fact that we don't get inflationary increases. Having the fee go into the charity protects the charity to a certain extent from those cuts. We're proposing that £10,000 of the fee goes into the park to do works that wouldn't otherwise be done. If you want to talk to us about changing that, that is within your remit to do, I think, Sarah. Sarah's nodding, so yes, absolutely, please have that conversation. The other thing that I would say is, yes, the works that have been done in the park have been expensive. But to be very clear, the majority of works that have been done, particularly since the event in 2023, that has been at Tram Lines' cost, so that is at zero cost to Sheffield City Council. In response to the issues that were had, Tram Lines have invested money to bring it back to the standard it was before the park, before the event, sorry, and then to improve it to try and prevent that happening in future years. So yes, extremely expensive, but not at Sheffield City Council's cost. The works that we've done have been, has been stuff that needed to be done, that was not associated with the event, the works that we would have, we would have been looking to do over the coming years that we've taken the opportunity to do at the same time as other works were going on in the park, in the hope that we would minimise the disruption to the park. One lot of work's happening over a number of weeks rather than three weeks of work here, four weeks there and then next year the same again. So just to be clear, there has been investment in the park from both the council and also from Tram Lines. The Tram Lines stuff is at zero cost to the council and is, we think, a benefit to the charity.
Yeah, thanks. I was bound to pull you up on the fact that Gary's just told us that actually the council has paid for a certain amount of the drainage. I don't want to think, because I don't need to dwell on that point, but I mean, it's still the council putting money in. I appreciate that Tram Lines are putting some money in too.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And just on that, obviously Sheffield City Council does invest in its parks when they're needed. So yes, absolutely, the council has put some monies in to do some works. Not in response to what happened this year, not in response to the issues, because that is Tram Lines' job to fix. We have done other works in the park, as we do in our parks across the city throughout the year, yeah.
Okay, I'll park the questions there.
Just quickly, so the £10,000 per year that would go to, I'm not sure how that compares to the previous years when it was a different fee. But perhaps could you give us some examples of what that has been used for or could be used for? That is, because you're saying it's over and above general park maintenance and so on.
The key thing here is it hasn't happened in previous years. It's something that we're proposing to do with this increase in the fee that's being proposed and that we can talk about if you want to go into closed session. So it hasn't happened in previous years. We haven't had a proportion of the event fee allocated as an extra budget for Hillsborough Park. So that the residents and people who visit the park from across the city can see the benefit of Tram Lines. So this is something new. And as for what it could be used for, the world's our oyster. I don't know. What I would say is that we would hope that it, we want it to be used for things that we wouldn't pay for as normal. So parks and countryside have a responsibility to make sure that things are maintained in the park and that we do works that are necessary. We certainly do all health and safety works and ideally we're able to put money in where something needs improving. That's not always possible. We want it to be things that sit outside of that business as usual. So that if you come into the park, you can see that happened because Tram Lines takes part, takes place in Hillsborough Park. Does that make sense?
So, I mean, we have had an opportunity to go through this following the deferral at the last committee meeting. And my journey on this has been, I'd sort of like to see councillor Johnson's point on the fee, £10,000. And I think there is an issue which governance and the accounts, possibly this committee, need to think about in the future is, how do we demonstrate to the public it's additional? As opposed to, because sometimes some of that additional stuff might be something we're forced to do, no choice. Because whatever it is, is collapsed or fallen down. I think it's important to discuss that. £10,000 in the great scheme, I think, not a fortune. But I have been persuaded by this, again, how we illustrate it to the users' satisfaction is something to be considered. Personally, I've been persuaded by the certainty of funding. In uncertain times, in times when we're facing revenue cuts, I think it's important to be able to point to, this is a racing certainty. And then as always, I think we're asking, is this the sort of event that's a park type event? Well, it's a big event, but it seems to me it is the sort of thing you would see on occasions in a park. It's a bit sad, in a sense, that we've learnt lessons, as it were, from what we wouldn't have wanted to learn lessons from, from the disaster of the flooding really that we had. And it's probably not something we can dismiss though as a risk. I think members, I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it, we had a report about Storm Babette. And, you know, the amount of rain that fell in a month was absolutely tremendous. And that was on top of a period of continual wet weather. And possibly we were up against it now in terms of reinstatement, because we've got that narrow window. But taking everything into account, I mean, I feel we've had reassurance on the, it wasn't sort of like the questions that couldn't have been answered. But anyway, there were sort of like questions that I think members felt we'd not really had a chance to get to grips with. And I hope at least in part, all of us are satisfied that we've now given this a good go and had a comprehensive report from Gary over there. So there are recommendations, I'll work chair on page 88. Are we all agreed? Councillor Johnson?
No, I've got to fend against, I just need to have one. I mean, I can't accept that it's actually in the interest of charities' objectives, you know. So there's lots of good progress there, but for me on this one, then can you put my name down as not supporting that, those recommendations?
Now, we now have to, we have a show of hands, so can I see those in favour of the recommendations? And those against? And you want your vote to be recorded as well in the minutes? Okay, here's my record then, I think, amounts to the same thing. Right, so with that item, that concludes the meeting. Thank you for your attendance, thank you officers for attending and those members of the public who might have sat through, I think, if that gentleman there is. Thank you so much, sir, and to everyone else who's contributed. Thank you.